You go back to Dr. D'Antoni.
Good evening, everyone. This is the Thursday, April 11th, 2019 Tanna Monroe Planning Board Workshop Meeting. Noreen, would you take a roll call of who's present?
Anthony Vaccaro.
Here.
Lisa McQuade is absent. Bonnie Franzen.
Here.
James McKnight.
Here.
Jason Sturinsky.
Here.
Jeff Manson.
Here.
And John Allegro is out.
With that, we have a quorum so we can conduct business. First order of business is to point out the fire exits. There are two in front of me, one to the left, one to the right by the kitchen, and then there's one behind me in this corner. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get into applications and business, just want to wish a quick happy birthday to Jim and Jeff. Birthdays were yesterday.
And Bonnie's was April 4th, so happy belated to hers.
Thank you. I think I may be R2 now. So the first item on the agenda is lands of Bradley.
My name is Richard Krogan. I'm the attorney for Ed Bradley.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Richard Krogan, the attorney for Ed Bradley and engineer John Pechesini is here.
Can you spell that, please? Thank you.
This is a project that began back in 2007 and has appeared in various ways before this board, again in 2011, and we're back again trying to hopefully finalize it now. So John can go through the explanation of what we're doing.
I'm actually trying to bring this up also on our screen. Okay.
It's a fairly straightforward process. The existing parcel-
See, the judge just tipped the mic down so we can hear the debate.
The existing parcel has its primary frontage on Circle Drive where there's an existing driveway from the existing dwelling. He also has frontage on the rear parcel of the lot on a right-of-way which enters into Circle Drive on the back end of it. So he has a double frontage. The lot is a little bit over 2 and 1/4 acres. Forty thousand is the minimum required in this zone, so we're simply proposing to cut the lot in half. So there would be two parcels, each of them roughly forty-five, fifty thousand square feet. One of them is forty-eight thousand, one of them is fifty-one. So they're both compliant with the bulk regulations. The existing house is served with an existing well and septic, and we would have a proposed well and septic for the new house. We have performed soils testing for that septic, and we found it to be favorable. The design in front of you is based upon those soils tests. As Rich mentioned, we've been here several times. There's never been any difficulties with this project. It's been unrelated issues on the owner's side, which has caused the delay. We do require a 280A variance for the frontage on the new lot as it would be over a private road in this right-of-way. We have previously received that referral from your board to the ZBA, have received the variance. We believe that variance has expired at this point, and we would need to reapply. So our first goal with your board would be a new referral for either a new variance or for them to confirm the previous.
It would be helpful if we could see the decision to see whether it had a duration of provision, but if it did and it's expired, they'd have to go back to the zoning board. If it didn't, the variance may still be in effect, but we'd have to see. I don't have a copy of it. The file is so old, ours is closed and gone.
So would you have a copy of the ZBA decision?
I don't. I will have to reach out to see if I can get it.
I will search for it and see if I can find it anywhere. I cannot guarantee some of the files are in storage, but I will see what I can find if there's anything there.
But the board may want to authorize the referral letter, and if we find that the variance is not time-regulated, then we can just, you know, inform the zoning board and leave it alone. But I'll be happy to write the letter.
So at this point, this is basically a new application. It wasn't pursued, and you submitted a new application, correct?
Correct.
Okay. With new fees, et cetera.
Yes.
So we're treating it as it's new. So we'll have to do seeker and everything else with regard to the application. As far as the history, do you have other studies, or was anything submitted in support of the previous application? At this point, we only have the one that you presented. I don't know what the history is, if they did any other studies.
Yeah, we've never been requested to do any additional studies.
Back in 2011, the short environmental assessment form was done.
Okay. Did we get all the way to a neg-dec? Did you get a negative declaration, or you didn't get that far?
I don't believe we ever got that far.
Did you get to a public hearing?
No, we did not.
Okay.
For the zoning board, they did.
Okay, so you got all the way to getting the variance, and that's where-
Correct. That was the furthest it's ever gone.
Okay, okay. Mark, Mike, have you had an opportunity to take a look at this?
I did take a quick look at the plan and a couple of issues that maybe John can address, I'm presuming when they come back from the ZBA. The private road portion, you say it's over an existing right-of-way. Is that, so they don't have fee ownership on that?
There's two parcels in this right-of-way. There is one parcel which is directly connected to Circle Drive, which Ed Bradley does own in fee. There is a portion here in between our proposed lot and that parcel, which is part of the adjacent lot. It's part of a 50-foot wide right-of-way. It's been previously determined that that right-of-way was valid for access, but the legal ownership of it is divided.
And that ownership is not in the name of Mr. Bradley? It's just some kind of right-of-way?
Yeah, a parcel in the middle is connected to this neighbor, showing us Quinn.
Okay.
The reason I raise it is that as a private road, if it serves access to more than obviously one lot, and currently it looks like it serves higher and Quinn, and we'd be adding in this new proposed lot, I would believe that a private road maintenance agreement would be required, and that means that the other property owners would have to, as you might say, buy into the maintenance agreement. So that legal issue as far as the right-of-way, I don't know that it makes any difference who owns fee of land, as long as there is the right to use it and a maintenance agreement to take care of it. So that should be an issue that between tonight and when you return from the ZBA, we resolve to the satisfaction of the board and to Mike.
Previous discussion about the maintenance agreement, and I know many of you were not here for the applications, you may have totally different ideas. We can't force any of the current residents that use this to sign on to a maintenance agreement. So we agreed that we would do whatever was required in preparing a maintenance agreement, approaching the existing owners, trying to get them to sign on, but in the event that they refused to sign, the responsibility for the maintenance would be shared by possibly just our new lot, or maybe with one or two of the adjacent owners.
And that would be acceptable, as long as there's one entity that is in a recorded instrument saying they'd maintain that roadway. It would be more fair if everybody shared, but if you can't get it, you can't get it.
Right.
Okay. Also relative to the private road, the need to provide a turnaround, it's in compliance with Appendix D of the state code for turnaround, and we need to just make sure that the private road detail meets the current standard. There is a slight tweak that was made because of the state code, which I go over with John. It doesn't really have a tremendous impact, just has to do with the finished surface of the private road.
Okay.
But turnaround in Appendix D has to be provided. We've dealt with that on a couple recent private roads as well. Just so the board's aware, the soils tests are shown. We didn't witness any of the tests. If the board had desired that the soils tests are witnessed, we would need to know that so that we can coordinate that with John.
Orange County wouldn't have witnessed it. It was just on-
It's not a realty subdivision, so they wouldn't get involved.
Okay.
Bulk values, the bulk table should be double-checked because it appears that the lot area, they're showing the builder's acre versus an actual acre, which is what's in the code, and the lot coverage percentage is incorrect. So just double-check the bulk table before you come back. And a reminder that being a realty subdivision, as you notice, as we've observed, you have Steve Green's name on there, but it really should have meets and bounds and have his stamp on it so that it confirms that he's reviewed all the numerical values. So that along the way needs to be added. That's about it for the preliminary review. I understand they do have to go to the ZBA, so that just gives them a couple of things to work on while they're over at the ZBA and before they come back.
I want an opportunity for the board to look at the plan, since they're just seeing it, so I don't envision that we're going to refer you to the ZBA quite yet until we have an opportunity to make sure that the layout complies with the existing zoning because it was amended in 2017. A couple of things. One is that there are now household relocation notes that have to be added to the plan, and certain measurements made. Number two, we don't use the word "flag lot," but essentially one of the prohibited uses is a flag lot. So I would want, perhaps Mike could weigh in, based on the prohibited uses and the way they're worded, and maybe this is something that'll go off to the ZBA as well, whether this would be deemed a flag lot. In addition, there is a minimum lot area requirement now that subtracts out environmental resources of certain types of environmental resources. So we would need to see whether there are any steep slopes here that are within the slope range that gets deducted. And I would like, perhaps if the EMC can go out, or MCC could go out, to look at whether there are any wetlands present. I see a drainage ditch. I don't know that that has any wetland vegetation. It may just be a ditch, but normally we would ask the Conservation Commission to go out and check the site in general.
Okay.
The new regulations require a tree plan when you're clearing for new construction and subdivisions, so we're going to need some kind of tree plan. So make sure you look at the tree section, which is new and updated in the code.
All right. Now, that could be limited to the cleared area?
I don't think that's unreasonable, provided then we're going to show limits of disturbance, and we're going to enforce the limits of disturbance. So that would be, you know, a requirement condition, as far as I'm concerned, except for the board. All subdivisions now require submission of a cluster, I believe, but we can waive it for minor subdivisions. I'll have to check that. I think just in terms of the map itself, if we could show a little bit more clearly that that portion of the driveway is within a right-of-way. It didn't pop for me, so if we could just somehow show that more clearly. Tree, cluster, the bulk, Mark already mentioned. Those were my initial comments. Anybody else have comments on this application at this time?
Sorry, I didn't follow. Why is this going to the ZBA?
280A. 280A requires that a roadway providing access meet two requirements. One, that has to have a certain formal status. Here, that was satisfied. I looked at my old letter because it was shown on a filed map. But the second, it has to be suitably improved, and the zoning board can set the standard. If it doesn't meet the private roadway specification, then the zoning board under 280A can set an appropriate standard. We do get into an issue that the highway specifications are not part of the zoning chapter, but that's for the zoning board to determine.
If it meets the private road regulations in the code, does it still have to go for 280A?
No.
So if you do have the proposed private road meet the, in all ways, the private road requirements, then it would save you a trip to the ZBA?
Yes. Yes.
One other item that we've been adding, John, to plans just so they're easier to file and track, is an approval box in the right-hand fold, lower-hand fold.
No problem.
With that box having the project number on it, so we can all find out the correct file it has to go into, since we do have some duplicate names and applicants and such, just makes it easier. The project number on this is the 173-2019, which is on the agenda, so if you can get that into the approval box, it looks like easier.
Does anybody have the old file number?
I think it might have been on the application.
Something. Maybe it was the escrow account you mentioned.
Yeah, there was an escrow, and I copied it. I added it, too.
But I don't know if that's a project number.
They just might be able to find some information from the number. Anybody has it?
I'd have to go back and look and see how I transferred it in the office. I can't get into it.
I have an MAG task number.
That would match likely the-
10-48.
So it's 2010.
I'm sorry, 1045.
So it's probably 2045, that's 2010. Generally tracked the municipality number. I will hope back then.
I'll look. But I definitely have an escrow that was in the system, and I combined it into the new one, and I think they put a transfer number. So I can look tomorrow.
I just want to bring up the, bring up Orange County GIS, so you can give us a little bit more of an orientation of where this is and what the site itself is actually like. So it's off of, I think, Pine Tree. Circle Drive is off of Pine Tree.
Off Pine Tree, and then right on post, and then Circle Drive is just down-
Off of post.
Right.
And I apologize to members of the public. We only have one screen here, so we can't reverse it so you can see.
Do you expect-
Ward, if you're on the MCC, do you want to come sit behind us?
Yeah.
It's very beneficial.
Elevation-wise, we won't be doing much. The limits of grading will be the roadway width plus five feet or so.
There's Pine Tree in the right location.
You got to go down.
This way?
Yep. Keep going, and to your right. Keep going. Keep going. Post Road is there?
I see it. Post, and there's Circle. Great.
So our existing-
I'll zoom in so we can get the actual lot shape. Hold on a second, John.
I just gave Ward an application.
Okay.
So he has to look at.
Give it a minute to zoom in. It's off of here, right, and then wrapping around?
Yeah, this is our existing.
Okay. So this is the house, I believe, that's on it, correct?
Yes.
And then it comes, the lot oddly shaped back this way, then?
Yeah, the common driveway is this through here.
Okay.
Under existing conditions, this house goes directly to Circle Drive. This, his main driveway is coming out onto Circle, but he has a secondary path that comes out to the private drive, to the private road. So.
Was this supposed to be a stub? I mean, did he-
At one time, it was a 50-foot wide right-of-way for a future street.
Yeah, it looks that way.
Show on the filed map.
Okay. So that would have been the stub, and then, so he's using the stub to be able to create this back lot?
Correct.
What is this subdivision? Do we know what the original subdivision was? Let me see if I can actually pull up a tax map.
Map 2915 from 1972.
Okay, here we go. So it's interesting because it shows a dotted line for, I guess, a right-of-way?
Yeah, on the map itself, it was shown, from my memory, it was shown as a roadway, a future accessway.
To which property would it have gone to?
Sorry, to lot-
Like something off of the-
Section 24.
Something in here?
It was for future connection to larger parcel.
Okay. So this right-of-way for access to this parcel, if it's intended for this parcel, is it also allowing access to the one that you want to subdivide?
Someday, if this parcel wanted to use this private road, subject to your approval, yes, they would have legal right to it.
Right.
Would you mind zooming out?
Sure.
It's actually part of the land, the road bed.
So I guess, and just to be clear on my comment, so a future road was going to go here, some future access for whatever property is back here. Was this ever the subject of a subdivision back in here, this parcel? Do you recall? No?
I don't remember.
And-
There are a lot of these roads throughout the town.
Okay.
Previous planning boards, any large parcel, they would leave a stub road to.
And the subdivision regulations require that, the potential connection to undivided, unsubdivided lands, undeveloped lands?
If that's the potential ultimate use for that 50-foot strip, it would make sure that the maintenance road, the private road maintenance agreement would reflect the ability to upgrade to a town road so that it wouldn't require a write-off from the current users for a future upgrade to a town road, if that's what the long-term intent was from prior approvals.
Yeah, that's, I think we need to see, do a little research on what these other-
Probably get a copy of the map.
Yeah, the map and what was required. And again, to ensure that this right-of-way also allows this newly-formed lot to get access to it, or was it more exclusively for this section? That's kind of my question. What was the intent of this right-of-way? And I'm sure you would have the deeds or whatever to show the intent.
I do.
Okay, great. Did you, you haven't submitted one, have you?
I believe they were submitted at one time.
Okay.
My concern is if we have something that is intended for a greater use, if we impose a private road restrictions on it, we'd be actually restricting upgrades in the future. So we need to leave that door open.
The lot that's created that would get access through a private driveway over that strip, would it be set back? Let's say in the future there was a right-of-way. Is it set back enough to meet whatever requirements exist?
On the current plan, I've assumed that that right-of-way line-
Okay.
-is a front yard, and done a front yard setback from it.
Okay, so you did the 50 feet, and then the front yard is measured from and beyond the 50 feet?
From that right-of-way line.
Okay.
John, while we're looking at that portion of the plan, what is the extra deck line to the right?
I should have erased, but that is the offset to make sure the well was clear of the middle.
Okay, just kill that line. We had a question mark next to it.
Is there any implication of the well, if there was a future road, the well being located there? I don't think it's a separation distance.
Separation is on the property line.
Right.
Or from septic.
Well, actually, it's interesting because the lot to which, that Section 24 lot, I guess is the Monroe Woodbury, is that Monroe Woodbury parcel?
School district says, yeah.
Yeah. So this large parcel is where the school is. So the likelihood of it being subdivided in the future, it would mean, it's unlikely, school districts-
Could happen.
It could, but I don't think they generally like to give up land. And so this is primarily treed back in here?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So I think to start, we want, if the MCC could go out, take a look at the site. If any of the board members want to go out, take a look at the site. I believe this would be an unlisted action.
Yes.
So I think for purposes of this evening, can we make a resolution to declare our intent to be lead agency?
I don't see why not, right?
So I'd like to make a motion that we declare ourselves lead agency for this action, or intend to be lead agency. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
That was Jason, yeah. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. I don't know if there are any other involved agencies for this.
No Health Department, no-
ZBA with the 280A, or is that an exempt?
Yeah. If it goes to the ZBA, if they are able to-
If they need it again.
-comply with the private road, they save that trip.
Okay. So what's required for the private road standards, Mark?
It's in the code.
It's in the code.
The only, it's not, that needs correction, I'll use that reference, is the detail of the private road has to show more of a finished surface to comply with the current state code requirements. And of course, we know about Appendix D for the turnaround. The rest of it's all covered in the town code.
Okay.
Maybe it has to go to the highway superintendent, too, right? Circle Road's a town road?
He would, he would either-
Would he have a driveway permit?
Vote, or report back in approval or disapproval of the curb cut, but given the fact that the 50-foot right-of-way was established, I don't know that there's much room to move anything.
If they did get the variance for the 280A, are we saying they still need to develop this to private road standards?
I don't believe that the zoning board can override the private road specs. It's not in the zoning code.
Okay.
It's for them to decide. Mark and I have talked about this in the past. The state law gives them the authority to waive the requirement on a basis of emergency access, suitable improvement to get fire, police, and ambulance in there. But do they have the authority to waive the highway specification that isn't part of the zoning chapter? Interesting. We'll have to see what they say.
Well, this proposed private road will only serve two new houses, right?
I think one.
One new house. I mean, maybe the neighbors don't want to see a fully-spec-ed out road to serve one house behind their backyard.
It serves two driveways now, and this will be the third.
Okay.
What's the potential that we open the door to this person wanting to subdivide their property to also get access?
Well, they already have that, right? With that, remember, that strip goes all the way to the school property.
Right, this here. So that could happen already. We're not creating-
Assuming they have enough land, yeah.
We're just saving them cost.
Was that a filed strip, or is that just a paper?
A 50-foot?
Yeah.
It's a paper road, yeah.
Paper road.
Yeah, this is it here. It looks like it was probably an actual, I don't know how it ended up in private ownership, or maybe it was always in private ownership.
It probably is just a reservation. There might be, if you look back at the deeds, it might have a-
But 3.3 looks like it ends at the back of that lot line.
Right, right here.
And then the continuation of that has been filed with the county?
Now, those dotted lines, it belongs to those two pieces. It's just reserved for future roadway use.
So that's not a paper road?
Well, it is. The problem is, when you, if you make that a straight line, somebody buys it on a tax sale, and then they try to interfere with the development in the future and hold somebody up for money. So you don't want to make it a separate lot. It would be a problem. So you encumber it by laying it out for future roadway purposes, but you keep it attached to those lots.
So I think we need additional deed information, then, as well, just to see what the status of that right-of-way is, so we know what's happening. You'll update the maps to make sure that the minimum lot area is met, subtracting out environmental constraints, put the house relocation notes on it, which also requires measurements of the house from the three property lines. You'll see what it states in there. Again, board members, Ward, you have any questions? No? So I think once that's in, then we'll, you can come back to another, I think, workshop agenda.
Okay.
And then we'll work through that, if everything's complete. Yes.
Question on the sanitary system. Is there any desire to have perks witnessed, or are we working off of the-
The testing actually was witnessed. We did have somebody from your office out there.
When?
December 18th.
I'll pull out the records. I don't know how they went out and witnessed it when there was...
They snuck out.
Probably no escrow setup, unless...
We've had escrow here for almost a decade.
Maybe that's what you convinced them of. All right, I'll double-check that. The other thing on the sanitary, just make sure that you've got the full 50% reserve area.
Okay.
Because you're really, really tight. Your 200-foot separation to the existing house well is virtually against the limits of the system, and, quick view, it doesn't look as if you have 50% expansion, which means that if there are any problems with this system, you're creating a non-compliance, expanding it into the 200-foot separation.
We can draw it out more to make it more...
So just fine-tune that.
So the county won't look at the septic if it's not a realty subdivision, or they still need approval?
Correct.
Okay, so we rely on you to...
Exactly.
Okay, review the septic. And so whatever septic details, and you'll look at those, obviously, on whatever the notes are and the specs on the map. We have a private roadway cross-section, but I don't know if that, do you recall if that met the town standards, that private roadway?
It met what was in the town code, but I know Mark had mentioned there was an update.
And that's just the width of the sub-base stayed the same, but the oil and chip minimum finish has to be widened, because the state code, in defining what is the accessible route for emergency apparatus, doesn't allow you to include shoulders. So we're just making the shoulders smaller and the finished road slightly wider.
Okay.
So it's insignificant in the cost of construction, but in speaking with fire inspectors over the last year, it just has to be done.
When we get to conditions, moving down the line, for that, because there's a separate lot on which the driveway relies on access, somehow that has to be encumbered or related to this lot?
That would be the private roadway easement and maintenance agreement.
Okay.
I mean, it already exists, I assume, in a deed somewhere, because it was on the map, but, well, it doesn't even have to be in their deed. They have the right, by virtue of the map, to use it, and they're going to agree to maintain it.
So let's say Mr. Bradley sells Lot 3.3, the easement will be maintained?
Which one is 3.3?
3.3 is the 50-foot strip that connects to Circle Drive. That, you said that, Mr., that's in Mr. Bradley's ownership.
That's weird how that became separate. Who owns the lot, the bigger lot next to it?
That is currently Quinn.
Okay.
Does Mr. Bradley own number, Lot 7, or any others, or just that 3.3?
Just the 3.3. I believe originally, 3.2 and 3.3, along with the piece of the 50-foot right-of-way...
Ah.
Were all one.
Whole and parcel.
Yeah.
And somehow, the middle section got conveyed.
That's weird.
That's strange how it was created, 3.3, because that's, that would be a non-compliant lot. When was this approved, this subdivision?
Seventy-two.
Oh, a long time ago. Okay. Do you have a, do you have a copy of that subdivision, you said, or?
He's going to get us one.
I have it referenced, I don't have the map, but we can get it.
We can get it, yeah. I'd like to see that in the map notes and get some background on that.
I know Steve has it from when he did the survey.
Okay. And I think we also, just again, mentioned the bulk requirements have to be updated, and we'll check out the site in terms of those environmental constraints, and I think that's it for now.
Okay.
All right?
Great.
Good, thank you.
Can I speak to that for you, sir?
Yeah, are you available for the next workshop? You want to be back on the agenda, or you want to...
This will be May 9th, and the middle is, middle is April 25th.
Okay. Sounds good.
All right.
Make an email if you have any questions.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Next item on the agenda is Karina Gomez?
Nope.
No?
Yeah, I have three.
DG?
You didn't take the one out of your folder? Take the one out of your folder.
All right. All right.
It is DG Management.
Because I have new business, I haven't done the old business.
I see.
Because they've been destroyed.
Jack pointed it out to me in a short...
All right. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Good. Why don't you let, for the boards, benefit your name for the record?
Sure. David Higgins, Langton Tully Engineering Survey.
Thank you.
And I am pinch-hitting for John Kleanin tonight, who's prepared the plans, but had some other obligations.
Keep going, I'll close in to you, okay?
Okay. So this project is, it's a cluster subdivision, is what's proposed. I know John and I each had made an appearance, there was a technical review meeting with consultants, and Bonnie and I believe you were there also, and I'm not sure if anyone else has attended any of those, but for those of you that hadn't, I guess this is the first time you're seeing the plan. So we have, along with the application, the two plans that were submitted, in the package of the conventional subdivision plan. This is a nine-and-a-half acre property, it's located off of Orico Road, or Orico Terrace, I'm sorry, and the main access for the project is proposed through a proposed village of Monroe Street that comes off of Scunney Monk Road. Basically, on the conventional plan, we had two of the lots come off of existing road tronage, and the others came off of the extension of the road. We showed basically 16 lots meeting the bulk requirements for the SR-10 zoning district, which required 10,000 square feet. I know this plan has, the conventional yield plan, as John had adjusted the lot width to provide a minimum 75 feet. I think that was one of the comments that we had at one of the technical review meetings. So now, all of the lots have that 75-foot width, and John, I think, also had provided on the maps a road profile, in one of the sheets, maximum grade of the road was 8%. And he had reserved, on that yield plan, an area for, actually two areas for stormwater management. Basically, just, he came up with what he felt was a reasonable size for those areas and showed those on the map. So, but that 16-lot plan is not what is proposed to be developed. The actual proposal is the cluster plan, which basically has the same entrance come off of proposed village of Monroe Street, and it would have a mix of single-family homes and several multifamily units. So it's a reduction in the length of the road, we don't have the driveway that goes out to Orico Terrace or to Scunney Monk Road. Basically, it's just the extension of the cul-de-sac, and we have four single-family units, three duplex units, and one lot with three units on it. One of the things we spoke about at the technical meeting was to have the single-family units on the north side, basically, so that they back up to the open space, and then beyond the open spaces, there's a couple of residential units there. So that was something we talked about. And, let's see what else we have on there. The open space is 5.2 acres. It's all to be owned by Lot 1, so we talked about having one lot owner owning all of the open space, just for ease of maintenance and whatnot. So the 5.2 acres exceeds the 50% that's required, which would be about four-and-a-half acres at the, at the minority property. The development's going to be served by private wells, which haven't been shown yet on the plan, but those would be private wells for the units, and then a county sewer, to connect into the county sewer system for the project. So at this point in time, what we were looking to do is hopefully get confirmation about the number of units, the 16 lots that we show on the yield plan, and then also, along with the EAF and the application, we're going to try to at least start the secret process with lead agency notifications.
It used to be, and maybe not.
So I guess the first item is to go over the conventional plan, and find out if there are any comments with regard to whether it in fact meets all requirements. I think my computer's very unhappy trying to open up both of these at the same time. It's a big file.
It's the imagery, I think.
It's very high-resolution, especially the aerial, so, there we go. So, again, I think because this has really been in informal discussions at the daytime meetings, so the board is really just seeing this for the first time. This is the site where trees had previously been removed, off of Orico Terrace. There's a large, you could see the 150-foot orange and Rockland Utility easement that goes behind it. Orienting yourself, here's Route 208 to the left and west, and then here's the terrace. And then, I guess, this bulb below and south of the subdivision, that's the new, I guess, Village Road that it would come off of?
Yes, and John had noted it on the map, he had gotten the information from Larry Toro, from C-Tech, I think, is that the name?
Something Tech.
Civil Tech.
Civil Tech, I'm sorry. So he'd got the information, the geometry of that from Larry Toro, so that's shown on the map, and they do have an easement over that, that's been filed in the county. And that two-lot subdivision in the Village of Monroe has received preliminary subdivision approval from the village, and right now, they're in the process of getting approval from the New York State DEC for the sewer extension. So once the sewer extension is approved by the DEC, they'll go back to the village planning board for final approval.
Okay, so is that, that's going to be the final shape, that bulb? Or would it be extinguished once this connects? Or it'll remain? It's just kind of an odd bulb into a road.
We may be able to reduce the bulb there, I suppose, if, for ease of maintenance.
I would suspect that the village would not want that cul-de-sac, you know, the teardrop cul-de-sac to remain.
Yeah.
It looks like it goes through an existing house. Is there overlay on the house? Am I missing something?
No, no, you're absolutely correct.
So they condemning that house?
I believe it's, yeah, it's going to be removed.
I hope so.
Yeah.
Hopefully, they know about it.
Get the people out before they go wrong.
So this is, is this the property here that they're going over? Or is it over, no, it's over here. Is this the one you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. And so they're doing a subdivision? There's a single-family there.
Is this the YMCA, right?
No.
That's the gas station.
All right.
Exxon's.
So, and this is a two-lot subdivision, so I guess they're creating another lot within the village off of that bulb?
This is the new... Yes.
All right. I think in terms of first order of business, we should send this map to the village, so they're aware. They may already be aware, but to make them officially aware.
And their DPW chief would be an involved agency for purposes of secrets.
Okay. I was going to say, so you represent the Village of Monroe, Langton Tully, so...
Yes.
If they want to review it, they'll address it at the village, who's going to review it, I guess.
Or we can approve it.
So send them this packet?
Yeah, send them the packet, the application especially, in both the conventional and the...
Okay, I'll send the whole thing out.
And the layout. So getting back to the conventional layout, the homes, as they're depicted, well, we're not pursuing the conventional, but you have them... Would they have had a garage? Would they have had, would there have been sufficient space for two cars there?
I think the question might be, what's the size of the houses that are shown?
Yeah, if they, if it's, you know, and the lots themselves are those reasonable lots.
Yeah, let me see what I got. Something, it looks like they differ in orientation.
Right.
I'll just pick a couple here. Lot 6, looks like it is 32 feet wide by 50 feet deep. I mean, it's a pretty standard-sized footprint.
Okay.
It looks like the driveways are leading up to all of them. I would think that the driveway entrances are all 24 feet, which is pretty standard. So I would say, yes.
You would have had...
I mean, we don't have architectural plans for these.
Right, no, and that's not the expectation, it's just, is it, is it a conventional subdivision that would have passed muster for purposes of just determining yield? The, my recollection was the easement is not being included in the lot areas, so this complies with the minimum lot areas excluding the O and R easement?
Yeah, let me just make sure of that. I believe he did take...
He's calling out net areas on the plan.
Yeah. Okay.
Yes, he has a note there. Yes, so he took off the floodplain, we don't have floodplains or wetlands on here, but he took out steep slopes and the easement area.
So the Lot 10, so you would have gained access for conventional purposes of determining yield from Orico Terrace? Because it doesn't front to the proposed road?
Yes, and I think John had mentioned that, I think there was a question about Lot 1 and Lot 10 and their access off of the roads, and I think John had said, Mike, you had looked into, you know, the conformance of those with the zoning code, and my understanding is that they were found to be conforming.
Well, I forget if it was that side or the other. The issue was this access down there, and whether, that was, again, a qualifying roadway shown on a filed map, so that satisfied the 280A requirement. And it's proposed as a roadway, so it's, there's no suitable improvement issue.
And so, and Lot...
Those are the lots I talked to John about.
And Lot 1 would not have relied on a 280A or some other discretionary action to create it?
No. That strip of land was shown on a filed map as a road, as a future roadway, and it's proposed to be built to either the private or the town road spec, I don't know which, but either one would be qualifying.
It's shown, it's shown as a future roadway or driveway easement?
No.
I don't recall.
The land itself was shown as a roadway providing access on a filed map. 280A has two requirements.
Right.
The road has to have a formal status, and it must be suitably improved. It can have formal status in a number of ways. If the town has an official map, and the roadway is shown on an official map, you automatically have qualifying status. If you don't, and Monroe does not, then you look to see whether or not the roadway providing access is one shown on a filed map. If it's on a filed map and shown to be a future roadway, it satisfies the formal requirement. The second requirement is it must be suitably improved. That has also several flavors. It can be built to a town road spec, a private road spec, or to a specification that the zoning board sets that's adequate for the purpose of fire, police, and emergency services access. Here, that strip of land was shown as a future roadway on a filed map, and it's proposed here to be built to a, either a private road or a town road spec, I forget which. So it satisfies both forces.
This one's just a driveway.
Well, then, okay, then it would need, if it doesn't meet that, but they don't own it, right?
No, they don't own it.
It's not part of this land. Well, then it would have to meet the private road, they can just propose it as a private or a town road spec, they're not going to build it.
Yeah, it's not intended for construction, I think it's just to show a viable access.
Right, I think, I think the question is, would we have approved it? And...
You could not have approved it as a mere driveway, but you could approve it as a town road or a private road satisfying the spec. So if they show it as that, it's over.
And do we have the map or the language it shows and demonstrates that you have the 50-foot access easement? Was that provided previously?
I think I was showing a copy of the map. I think John had it at the meeting.
I remember, John, we went over this. I just, I didn't know what proofs he may have submitted.
He may have sent me a PDF, and I don't have it here, but it'll be helpful if you provided it to the board. I know I did see it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think to be able to sign off on that, we want to make sure it wouldn't have required something extraordinary to approve it, since it's getting access via that easement. Mark, at this point, I know you've reviewed this in the past, do you have any additional comments in terms of, especially, I guess, Lot 1 and Lot 10 in particular, but is this really a buildable, would this have been a buildable subdivision?
I'll preface everything I say with, everything I say was... I'll preface everything I say with, everything's buildable if you want to spend enough money. And I don't know that the standard for a yield plan is how much money it would cost
No.
to build it.
No.
I look at yield plans as being a different animal even than preliminary plans. So, the base criteria that I've used, unless the board tells me it's inappropriate and do more, for a yield plan, I look at, do the lots meet zoning? The key issue, if they don't meet zoning, then discussion's over. If they meet zoning and roadways are depicted with slopes that meet the code, obviously, if the roads are absolutely unbuildable in any fashion to meet the town code, then they wouldn't be demonstrating that the lot as a total entity could be subdivided. Here, they've shown us that the road slopes on the proposed road would meet the town specs. They've shown us that all the lots depicted meet the zoning requirements as to how they would develop it. That goes one step beyond, in my mind, what a yield plan has to show. An example is the small bulb cul-de-sac on the right side that serves lots 2 and 3. Realistically, would the highway superintendent want that cul-de-sac? Likely not. Does it, could it be approved? Yes, it would require that write-off from the highway superintendent, and that write-off potentially could be obtained. But again, this is not the plan that they're proposing to build, so I look at it from the standpoint of, what is the maximum number of lots that would meet the zoning code and have accessibility for, via the proposed town road? And they're showing 16. Looking at it, all 16 lots appear to meet the zoning code. The roads are slopes that are consistent with the town code.
How do you know that the slopes on the roads are consistent?
Uh, they've given us.
Have you provided a profile?
They've given us a profile on sheet 2.
With cuts?
Showing the cuts, and there is a significant cut.
And how, and do we know how those cuts would, I mean, if they're realistic cuts, and how they would affect individual lots and driveways approaches?
And I don't go into driveway designs as part of a yield plan. Again, if the board says that's the threshold that we should have, I generally, for yield plans, don't do that.
Do, for, so, again, just in terms of whether it meets the regulations in our highway standards, subdivision regulations, is there a driveway slope that they have to meet?
There is a restriction on slopes, but again, are you asking the applicant to give us a complete grading plan as part of a yield plan?
No, I think just a reasonable, if you look at this and you see, let's say, slope of the driveway could not exceed 15%. And if, in fact, the driveways that are being shown are 30%.
They don't show grading, so we don't know what the slopes are.
And so they would have to show at least slope ranges?
We would have to have them provide.
Yeah.
So, do they, do any extraordinary cuts on their profiles, like walls in the rightaways?
I can't answer that because we don't have a grading plan.
No, but I mean, just to build the road?
Likely, and one of the reasons that I understand why the cluster regulations are written as they are is that you attempt to minimize disturbance to the land. The plan, as they're showing it, will require some significant cuts to construct the road. It's likely that that grading would have to occur outside the rightaway to create the driveways and the pads for the houses.
Yeah, so what I'm seeing is a lot of cut, a lot of short driveways, which would definitely impact the slope of those driveways, and they could be extreme. So, you know, to shoehorn in 16 lots just because of a flat plan layout, generalizing things, you know, I'm uncomfortable with that, and I would like to know more.
Right, I think every, every planning board has, member has to weigh in. I, from my perspective, things I see are, if you were to suddenly fill two acres of wetland to achieve the subdivision, I would say that's not realistic, because you probably wouldn't get an Army Corps permit for that. Or if you truly were, you know, on a rock slope like this, the likelihood that someone's going to grade out just to put a house in, I, to me, that's a little, you know, questionable.
The language of the statute is approvable, and I don't think it includes economic feasibility, but it does require that it be approvable itself. One of the problems personally, I feel, with the statutory scheme, and that's why you have to find whatever is the appropriate level of approvable. What offends me a little bit is, and it's not the board, it's the statute. It requires someone, if you take it to the full extreme, to engineer an entire subdivision that they never planned on building, and that's cost. And then, when you're done with it, you throw it all away except for one thing, the lot count. Then you start over. That, to me, is not a great approach, but it is the approach of the statute.
Sure, but I think that, along with, you know, dealing with realistic sloping and realistic cuts, and I understand that, you know, costs may not necessarily be our concern.
Right, assuming you could always build a wall, or retaining a wall, or always bringing enough fill
But you will affect the drainage a lot different than it is now, and it might require extraordinary drainage and extraordinary measures to build out those driveways. So, you know, what is reasonable, I'm just going to tell right now.
I think the line is difficult to set because every application is a little different.
Right.
So, to set a content requirement for a yield plan and have it apply to all applications?
It's very difficult.
It's tough.
Right.
And sure, they could submit a plan that shows a preliminary grading, show us the cuts and fills, show us the driveway slopes. It may get to the point that the development cost for each lot is such that it's more to their benefit to have a cluster than anybody's, but there's also the environmental benefit that you wouldn't be doing that great disturbance.
Maybe we would take a look at the most extreme situations and those lots that would have the greatest cut and the greatest, and the most likelihood of a steep driveway, and see how that gets fitted into the plan, because if that is reasonable, then maybe if that was the extreme end, then you know everything else is fairly good.
Again, I leave it to the board to decide what additional information you need for this application to determine that the yield plan is adequate for a lot count.
So.
If you want grading plans?
So, those grade-out areas on the plan, those are steep slopes?
The lines are steep slopes.
And with regards to Lot 1, which is the long driveway, so they're proposing a road to serve one house?
They'd have to, they'd have to propose it either at a town road or a private road spec, yes. And that may not be economically feasible, but it's certainly approvable.
Well, you know, if it's a road for one dwelling, would it be economically feasible for that homeowner to maintain that road?
No, it wouldn't, but that, that isn't the standard. The standard is whether it's approvable.
And is the length of the road to the house, you know, within limits? Or does that driveway actually have to be shorter? Is there any regulations on that?
I don't believe there is.
I want to touch upon, you had indicated that the way this is designed for the conventional, I believe you said you don't think the highway superintendent would have approved it? Is that the case, or we don't know? We just said we don't know.
We don't know.
Okay.
But it could be a private road, then. The highway superintendent wouldn't have to accept a private road.
But, um, this bulb, we were talking about the bulb and this, because he couldn't approve this as a private road, there are too many lots, I believe.
No, for the bulb itself, could be a two, two-dwelling private road. They would share everything that was outside of the straight 50-foot rightaway going back to the left cul-de-sac. And I've seen that in other cases, so again.
That could be private?
It could be private.
Sure.
They could be responsible for snow removal and maintenance of that, you know, be it an 80-foot diameter paved common area that serves those two houses. Again, it's the difficulty in trying to look at it for yield plan purposes, in trying to take it to the almost final stages, as Mike indicated.
Right. I don't know, I guess I look at it, I don't know if that'd be realistic, because I can't imagine the highway superintendent going by, plowing everything, and then forgetting, you know, saying, "That cul-de-sac is private." I just wonder if he would, if he'd look at this layout and say, well, in the end, if this meets the town specifications, the grades, whatever the requirements are in the code, I don't know how it could be denied.
Well, the other thing, I think there is a balance between the cost that you would invest, because at some point in time, it may get ridiculous with the rock cut and the work that's required to put in drainage and sewer in a rock cut and for trenching that, you know, those number of houses wouldn't fiscally support building that road and making all those improvements to do that.
So, Mark, getting back to your thoughts, you think that this is, you think 16 lots could be done? Let's say this were a conventional plan, let's pretend the cluster didn't go away. Do you think this would be something that a board could approve? In, again, this is a concept, I understand that.
Kind of a loaded question, because we're trying to make the determination without having
More information.
anything beyond a concept plan.
Yeah.
And I, and I go back to, I think the board needs to feel comfortable with what level plan you believe is necessary for purposes of a yield plan. Personally, for all my years doing this, we've always drawn the line that a yield plan doesn't have to be a preliminary plan. It's in the concept plan, between a concept plan and preliminary plan. Just enough to show that you could actually get a road in there and that lots meet zoning. As to how you're going to develop each lot, we don't go there. But I don't know that that line is really in the state code.
No, approvable is what you think is appropriate.
So, I think the board has to feel comfortable with the standard you set.
Right. So, so getting at that, let me ask this. Lot number 10, is lot number 10 mostly rock, or is that, what's, what's the nature of that lot, number 10? Do you know offhand?
I don't know, no.
Okay.
No.
And again, we don't know if the 15% as an example driveway is what would occur if it's put in the location shown, because there's no grading shown. And again, I've seen some pretty interesting grading jobs done with retaining walls and such, so that you can stay within the 15%. It becomes a bit expensive, but some people like modular block decorative landscaping retaining walls. And there's nothing that says that you have to have a garage. It could have a parking area and then stairs up to the house. There's nothing in the law that says you have to be able to park 20 feet from your house.
Right, no, I agree with that, but we do, by the zoning, require two parking spaces, so somewhere they have to accommodate two.
Agreeable, but I had another board who, who questioned on a very steep slope in another community, how could you ever get a driveway to the house? And the developer said, "I don't plan on it. We're going to put a parking space 50 feet in, two or three parking spaces, and they're going to go up a set of stairs." And the building inspector said, when they asked him if it was legitimate, he said, "They do it in Europe all over the place in the Alps." And it was tongue-in-cheek, but the point is, is that it's not required.
Right.
So, again, we don't have, we have no idea how they're going to develop these individual lots with this grade of plan. And I, I don't think it's my place to set where the line should be for the yield plan, but if you tell me where you want it, I'll work with Dave's group to make sure it's reviewed.
So, then I think that's a good approach, so, you know, ultimately, the planning board has to establish the maximum yield. So, Anthony, from your perspective, if you look at the subdivision, what are some areas that you would like additional input on to be able to say, this represents a subdivision that could have been approvable, therefore, this is the yield?
So, I don't think I have enough information to know exactly where we're at.
Okay.
But I would say that there is a significant amount of grading, rock cut, and costs associated with that, an impact to the landscape, that I, you know, can't tell if 16 lots is really a reasonable conventional layout. And, you know, I would like to know more about what those lots would look like, if you could get a driveway into those lots, and I don't know if this is within our review, but, you know, a cost that would be associated with constructing those, that area. And also, would like to see the road, and I would like to hear back about the road configuration, if that indeed could be managed as a public road.
Is there, you know, again, I think Mark said this, every subdivision is different. If we had gotten a flat site, wouldn't we be worried about driveways or grades, et cetera? But this isn't a flat site. Is there any particular driveways that you want, you know, not all driveways, but particular driveways where you say? And again, this is the first time that the board is seeing this, so you may want another additional time to take a look at it. My reaction is, like, for instance, I see Lot 9, and I believe those gray areas that are being highlighted, what slope category is that?
The gray is greater than 30%.
Greater than 30.
Which the town requires that we show on the map, I believe, is the areas to be deducted from, you know, the gross lot area.
So, what is our driveway slope?
I think it is 15, but looking at Lot 9, I have no idea why they took the driveway off the right side of the house to the steepest slope, rather than coming in where it's semi-flat or, let's say, significantly less steep on the left side. So, that's just the difference between having a design plan versus a real concept.
Well, that's.
Well, with regards to the proposed dwellings, are those the actual proposed dwelling envelope? Or, you know, we had discussions about where those houses can be fit on the building envelope, and if those could be identified.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Are you done?
I'm done.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I was going to say that, I mean, the lot houses, I think, are just generic boxes that we've shown. I mean, you know, if we wanted to really fit them in, we could make them, I think, smaller. I don't know what the town has as far as a minimum lot size, or, you know, a house size for, you know, floor area, but these are pretty good-sized houses that we show on here, because they're just kind of typical boxes, so.
I think ours may, I know there's a section that has minimum livable floor area, it might be something like 900 square feet. It's not, it's not significant.
And you got to build as shown, meaning you can't build bigger than as shown, I guess is a more accurate way under the code, because we're using that house footprint for drainage purpose calculations.
I think the happy medium, so that some of the questions Anthony has, would be to ask for a rough grading plan, so we can see where the cuts and fills are and have some type of indication if you're dealing with gradable soils or if you're dealing with bedrock. If you were able to get us a preliminary grading plan to show us that where you have the significant cuts, you're actually moving and creating a fill on the other side where you're developing, let's say, on lots 12 through 16, maybe that cut and fill and the balance would work, would justify that the driveways are really achievable. And again, not setting the line for a yield plan unfairly, because this lot has a lot of steep slopes, and maybe the board just needs that level of comfort to know that it's buildable.
And with regards to the road layout, if this were to be, if the village didn't want that geometry and they want, and the applicant wants to move towards a private road, are there any limitations and restrictions to having a dead end, the length of a dead-end road?
For the small bulb cul-de-sac to the right or the whole thing?
The whole thing.
The lot count exceeds what's allowed for a private road. Maximum number of lots on a private road are six.
And in terms of it having a dead-end road, is there a length limitation, or minimum?
I believe there's, I believe there's a maximum length for a private road, but that's irrelevant, given the fact that the number of lots is so far over what's allowed.
Okay.
It's not worth looking at.
Is there a maximum length for a cul-de-sac in general?
I'd have to look at subdivision regulations to get the number.
There used to be, I think it was 500 feet.
Yeah, I know it wasn't, we didn't change the subdivision regulations when we only.
I think the private road was 800, to be honest with you, but I'll have to check.
So, one question would be, if this is a cul-de-sac, it's starting out, though, in the Village of Monroe, does it meet a length, if there is a length, and where do you measure that length from? And I don't know the answer, it's just a question I'm asking.
Yeah, John, it's not one of the things that we reviewed, so I don't know the answer to that either.
Maybe one way to do this is just look kind of lot by lot. So, Lot 1, I think the question is, in fact, is there an easement that they could have, that could have been used to be able to gain access?
Right, and I think we have, we talked about that. I have a map that we have in our files, and I think we gave, Mike, that we will send a PDF to Noreen for your record.
Right. And Noreen should get everything.
Is there a minimum slope on a, on a road or a driveway?
Minimum?
Yeah.
I don't believe so. I think there's, there's restrictions within the rightaway where you're accessing it down road.
But you need to have some drainage, either cross slope or.
Crown the driveway.
So, you think it would be in the subdivision if there was something about the cul-de-sac length?
I'm looking at it now.
Okay.
Would you have to show that there's positive drainage off the driveway? And what if it goes through a low point that floods?
Again, when you get the detailed design, you would look to see specific to the lot where the drains are directed. We've had highway superintendents where the residence is elevated to the lower town road, where they've required a cross slope to take all the drainage to the shoulders and dissipate it. it, and have a negative slope off the driveway, off to the town road. So that's on a lot-by-light-lot design basis that generally we look at that.
Well, I'm looking at the length of lot 1, and I don't see any grading, so maybe that's why I think it's flat, or any grades on the plan for that area, but...
So...
It raises a question mark is if, you know, that driveway would be prone to flooding.
So I'm seeing cul-de-sacs, maximum length shall be 500 feet.
Yeah, but that's, that's under the old code. It is 500, but is there something in the, in the new?
No.
Wouldn't have been the zoning.
The zoning wouldn't know.
So it is 500, that's what it always has been, yeah.
So if it's 500...
But when we did the highway standards, did we remove this, the street and highway standards from the subdivision regulations?
It's a separate section in the town code.
But I assume these were then revoked or repealed, because you can't have it both places, they'd be inconsistent, right?
Check into looking at the town road specs versus the subdivision regs.
I'm just looking at some of these standards here. Intersections, horizontal alignment, vertical alignment.
I think some of these subdivision provisions are superseded by the new town road specs, because as Mike said, you can't have...
Yeah, I assumed it was.
Both sections provide conflicting values.
When they provide conflicting values, did the highway say it would supersede? Because sometimes it's the more restrictive. I don't know what, what the interpretation is.
I don't know if I have that local law that put the highway...
The highway?
Stuff in.
Would it be a local law or would it be a code?
It was a local law.
It was a local law that put it into the code, probably under a highway chapter. I don't remember where they put it.
I can tell you that the intent from the town board who adopted the, or the town road specs was that they would, as the next step, go back and clean up the conflicts in the balance of the code. Unfortunately, it just didn't happen.
Here it is. Road specifications for town roads?
No, that's back in, that's, that's in the subdivision regulations, so no?
No, this is chapter 863, so it's...
I think that's it.
Oh, okay, that is it.
So...
But you'd have to see the local law, whether it repealed those that were included. That was, that's the code, that's necessarily the local law.
Right. So this gets into site distance, here are your private road standards. I think we're just looking to see quickly if there's anything about cul-de-sac length. That's private road, curb, sidewalks, intersections. Actually, I could probably do a search. About dead end.
Just put in length. Obviously, if it's maximum length, that's what, might be the winner.
Drainage, finish courses, clearing, so basically, here, what's this length? So there may be a cul-de-sac requirement and maximum in the subdivision standards and not in the highway specs.
But then they're not inconsistent.
No, then it's whatever applies, applies. Okay. Do you, do you know how long the cul-de-sac is, even just for the portion that's on the site?
And it says...
Well, if you look at the profile, it's showing...
It says no less than 1% for roads.
Yeah.
So the profile, they're showing, looks like he took it, if you look at sheet 2, he took it from basically the end of the center line of the proposed cul-de-sac that's in the Village of Monroe, and ran it straight to the far end. And to the, to the far end, it's 531 feet. If you go to the center of the bulb, it's probably somewhere around 480.
Now, the planning board has the authority to waive that, and the standard that the planning board used in the past for waiver was whether or not it provided a potential connection to, as of yet undeveloped lands. In other words, if, if it was going to exceed the 500, they would grant a waiver if it had an ability to, as we talked about in earlier applications tonight, connect to other land.
If it was, it could extend in the future.
Right. No, that is not written in the code, but that was generally the standard that the planning board used.
Okay. Do any other members have comments and questions?
I do. Okay, first, it's just a matter of disclosure, I just wanted to be said, I live on Orico Terrace. If you look where lot 10 is, I live on that side of the road, two houses down, so the house that's depicted just north of, well, just above lot 10 is my next-door neighbor. So I'm somewhat familiar with this area, and, and everything that's going on there. I've, I've been up into this area since the trees were cleared. Lot 10 is a concern for me as far as whether it's truly buildable. This whole piece that wraps around where Orico Terrace bends, it, there's a lot of bedrock there, and most of what's shown as steep slope is, is all exposed rock, and it's rock not much below the surface there. When you start to get further back, and I've kind of hiked back through the, through the easement behind, like where 7 and 8 is, all these lots above the road, maybe with the exception of 10, that's fairly flat, fairly buildable. And even the ones below, I mean, right, the, the contour line interval is two feet, so from the road to, like, the house on 15 or 14, and kind of, it's a little more sloped, but I mean, you're talking about 12 feet back to the house in elevation increase. So it looks steeper in comparison, but I think it's because the, the high side of the road is so flat comparatively, and leading into the easement. What I'm not 100% sure about, I mean, again, as is explained in the notes, the easement has been completely taken out of these lot sizes, and I'm, I think the scale of this being almost 10 acres, it just makes it look kind of small, but like, like what's left of lot 1 after you take out the easement, that that's 10,000 feet, although I know that that's not really all that big of a piece of property either, you know, when you're dealing with SR10 zoning. So if you've looked at those, Mark, and, you know, they truly seem to be, you know, the size that they are, just knowing the land, most of this is fairly conceivable. Again, my, my concern is 10, and maybe you'd have an issue with bedrock on 11 and 12.
Do you think 10 is questionable as far as...
I think 10, I think actually 10 is your most questionable proposal in this whole thing.
Okay.
From my knowledge.
Okay. In the town, are stormwater management basins allowed to be on the same lot as the dwelling? Or does it have to be on its own separate lot?
I've seen it done both ways. I've seen it done as easements, and the land owned in, titled by the individual property owner, and, and other occasions, they've wanted a separate lot dedicated to the town. I don't know if they've, they've created stormwater districts, and I've seen it done both ways by the town.
So is there any, under this, just recently, what's, what's kind of the current standard of practice, or it just depends? I don't know if there's any particulars.
Again, if it's down to treatment, they haven't really proposed, they've proposed the stormwater management areas, but we don't know what they're proposing in the roadway areas for, for treatment.
And the reason I ask is that lot 16, the net lot area is 10,000, is that with or without the stormwater basin? Do you know?
I'm pretty sure that'd be without it, but I can check at that.
Looking at the area compared to the other lots, it's likely just that...
It's probably without.
It's without.
Yeah. If you could confirm that?
Yep.
Anyone else have comments? So I think we're still in a process of looking at whether this is a, again, this is the late, this is the 16 is the yield for this subdivision, but why don't we then look to your cluster and talk about that a bit? And as a general question, within these Orange and Rockland easements, do we know what's allowed nowadays within the easement? Is it primarily they don't want to see structures, but they'll be okay with yards, et cetera?
Yeah, and of recent, I've seen cases where they've accepted driveways or other surface improvements, but they want nothing above surface level.
Okay. Because I think that would be another question with lot 10, is that, you know, you have to cross the easement to be able to get access to it.
Yeah, I think, you know, typically, what I've found with the, with easements is, you know, basically, Orange and Rockland doesn't own the land, they have an easement over it, as long as you're not, you know, impeding their access to, to the utility, you're entitled to put a driveway across it. As Mark said, you can't put structures there, no houses, and sheds and garages and that sort of thing, because I guess that, that would impede access to a utility.
Right. And I know it's changed over time. I know after 9/11, they were very restrictive, and I think they are tending to be less restrictive slowly, but I don't know what the current policy is, so I was curious. All right, so our cluster subdivision layout, if you could tell us what you're showing here?
Okay. So, so basically, this is a, we're looking to get 16 units on, using the land, but using it less intensively than is on the conventional plan. I mean, that's the purpose of clustering, is to try to, you know, preserve the, you know, the site as much as you can, you know, eliminate or limit earthwork and disturbance and tree clearing and, and infrastructure, you know? It will save the developers some money to put in a, you know, a shorter cul-de-sac road than, than what you might otherwise need for the, for the yield plan. So we have basically nine lots shown on the cluster plan, and it's, excuse me, as I made mention before, there's a mix of, of units to be built on the nine lots. You know, going around the cul-de-sac, basically, as you'd be driving up to it, you'd have lot 1 on the right, which would be a duplex, so you'd have two dwelling units there in a single structure. And then going around the road, you'd have lots 2, 3, 4, and 5, which would be single-family dwellings. Those would essentially back up to the Orange and Rockland easement, and to the residents that are on the north side of the property. And then basically, when you get to the end of the cul-de-sac, which we've shown is an eight-foot-long cul-de-sac, you'd have lot 6, which would be three family units in a single building. And then lot 7, which is two units, lot 8, coming back now to the, towards the Village Street, lot 8 would be three family units in one building, and then lot 9 is a duplex. So this would really, I think, you know, limit a lot of the disturbance that we talked about before, you know, the, the long access drive to lot 1 that we talked about on the yield plan, the driveway coming off of Orico Terrace, which was, you know, for lot 10 on the conventional plan. Those things would be eliminated. You know, having 16 building sites, as opposed to here, we have basically nine building sites, again, less disturbance, less earthwork, less infrastructure, you know, preservation of open space, you know, and again, that was one of the things I mentioned before, we have 5.2 acres, I think it was, of open space, more than half the property being developed.
So my reaction to this, and it's just the nature of this particular lot, is that a lot of the open space is required, because it's in the Orange and Rockland right-of-way. And so that would have been preserved anyway. And that really, the area that's being preserved is the portion of the property that's over by Orico Terrace. So that's my kind of reaction. I'll just note that on this particular plan, it's saying 800-foot-long cul-de-sac on the label, so...
Yes.
If it's 500...
He must have it taken, yes, so let me, I'll measure it.
Okay.
Let me see what we've got. I'm not sure where he measured 800.
57217, multiple dwelling groups are allowed on a cluster in the SR10. 57217C.
So it looks like he took it from, probably to the main place, I think.
On a cluster.
I think a general question would be, if we're doing a cluster, can we, are we allowed to change the cul-de-sac lengths, et cetera, or not?
But the density is the yield, so. It may be reconned to the section touching a building separation.
Mike or Mark, if there's, if this is a cluster subdivision, and let's say that the cul-de-sac is exceeding what's allowed by the subdivision regulations, to what extent can any of the provisions be varied, or do we have to stay within certain requirements?
You have the authority under the subdivision regulations to waive the cul-de-sac length.
Okay. And you had said the policy is, though, depending, that has been the past policy.
In the past, let me put it this way, the only basis upon which I recall the board granting a cul-de-sac waiver was where the roadway was providing potential access to other lands. But there's nothing in the code that limits your discretion in that regard.
Okay.
I think any valid planning purpose would, would make it. It would seem to me that a cluster might be a legitimate reason why you'd do it, but that doesn't address the question of whether on the conventional, it would have been appropriate.
Getting back to the question about the length, I believe it's 800 feet from Scotty McRoad, is what he shows on the, on the cluster plan.
Okay. Board members, do you have any comments or reactions to this particular cluster layout?
Bonnie, you mentioned, you brought up the subject earlier, that trees were taken out on this property already, and I guess part of my question, whether it's, would be, whether we were looking at building the conventional or the cluster layout, is how much of the remaining trees would be preserved as part of the open space, or even, you know, for the feasibility of building the various proposed, single duplex and three-family homes?
So I'm sorry, the question was, how much of the...
How much of the remaining trees on the property would be required to be removed to achieve this cluster layout, I guess?
Well, I think, I don't have the answer to that.
No, I would imagine, I don't think we're at that point yet.
Yeah, I mean, we have to do, you know, we have to do the grading plan for the, for the cluster plan, and determine, you know, the limits of disturbance, and, you know, then you'd be able to, I guess, identify, you know, which areas still would have to be, have to be disturbed, and which could be preserved.
I think with regard to this site, when I think about preservation of open space and layouts, this is sort of a knoll and a ridge that can be viewed from 208. And I think in the layout, what we would want to do is minimize seeing houses that are sitting perched above the village and the town. I think we want something that is, is not as visible. And so I would want to know with the cluster, to what extent would, if we were to put houses on the property with the grading, with this particular layout, are we going to, again, have houses sticking up, up on a, you know, in a very visible location from viewpoints in the, in the community? And so to that end, I don't know if there's a way to still shift some of this, and I know, again, you're limited, because of the, the right-of-way for Orange and Rockland utilities, but, you know, there's a lot of land associated with the duplex that is on lot 1. And it seems as if you could almost shift some of these so that they're more aligned with the utility easement. Again, I'm looking at this without any grading or anything, but, let me see. Again, I'm looking at this without any grading or anything, but, let me see. I think I closed the other one, let me open it. So if you look at the way these are aligned, I'm wondering if you could get them aligned more along, let's say, this line over here, so that if you took a couple of duplexes or the triplex, and you, I don't know if you're looking at this, Mark, just from a grading perspective, if they're more in line with the Orange and Rockland line, then, you know, are you able to possibly achieve, you know, the removal of one of the buildings over here, which may be overlooking, you know, the village essentially? So it just seems like there's some usable area in here that should be considered, and, you know, because I don't think if you get back into this part of the property, that's as visible as when you're over here, closer to Orico Terrace, where I think you have, you know, you're closer to the road, and you may be elevated high above it, and it may be visible.
Yeah, I think Lots 6, 7, and 8 are going to be your high-visibility properties, whether it's from 208, whether it's coming from down by the mobile station, and all of those things. You know, the reality is, even for the houses on Orico Terrace and off of Jane Court here, there's a lot of trees in here, and this is fairly sloped. So a lot of this is hidden from sight. Like, once you get beyond the rock wall here, it's very hard to see any of that from further down Orico Terrace.
Once you get beyond the rock wall, you said?
Yeah, you see where the rock wall is depicted in the...
Yep, up in the, by the O and R easement.
Because it's sloped up to that, and then when you come up over the rock wall, it starts to level out.
Yeah, that looks like there's a ridge right there.
And again, part of what I'm wondering is, would it be also easier to grade for and build the bigger footprint homes where it's just plain flatter? And again, you know, you have to look at the feasibility of that.
I have a question, and I just find this a little odd, that we have a mix of single-family units with multifamily units. I'm just wondering, like, why wouldn't you, I don't know what the mix of this neighborhood is, but why wouldn't you group more of the homes and, you know, come up with the same number of lots, but have larger lots? And then if you have multifamily units, are they going to, how, do we have contract agreements and maintenance agreements to take care of that? How would that work? Are we treating this as like a townhouse community mixed in with single-family lots? But you may be able to do something different if you had, you know, just three family-unit dwellings and eliminated some of the single units.
I, yeah, I don't know the answer to that. I mean, I have to talk to John about that.
Yeah, I think the applicant had expressed, you know, in the end, I think they actually wanted more single-family. And, but by virtue of the size of the lot and the need to cluster the open space, I think they decided to put the mix in. But I think they were looking for some single families as well, if I recall, but you would need to go back and ask your client.
I knew, from the time I went to the technical review meeting, I knew there was a mix. I just don't remember the rationale or the ratio of, you know, what they wanted. This is obviously what John has on the map, which is what the applicant, I guess, agreed to him as what they wanted to show on the map, but the rationale for it, I don't know.
So what happens with a three-family unit? Would that be a homeowner association for that lot?
Well, so, right now, the way they're showing it is, well, they're showing, I guess, they'd be, it'd be like a three-family dwelling on an individual lot.
Yes.
So who owns the lot?
It's only showing one owner, so it would be one owner with two tenants or families, the way it's proposed now.
I would, I think there would be a preference, I'm just going to say.
Is that called an apartment at that point?
That each of, each of the units, if they're almost like townhouses, duplexes, triplexes, that they be on individual lots, rather than being on a lot.
So you create lot lines down the middle of, for instance, Lot 8?
Yeah.
You'd have three, you know, townhouses.
Right, and then, you know, it probably would have to have a homeowners association.
If you did it that way, yes.
Yeah, and even this way.
Or condo association, or wherever you did it.
Yeah, even this way, it may.
Two-family house, you know, mother and daughter, I could see three-family house. I'm not so sure how that works.
Because I think, again, and you'd have to ask the client, they may have wanted, you know, these are in individual ownership, these units. So, you know, to carry that on further, you know, I would aim to put them on individual lots, almost like townhouses on fee simple lots. In fact, the other way to go would be to have, since you have at least 1, 2, 3, 4, depending on how this ends up being laid out, all of those could be on one lot, and then you just have a fee simple...
Sure, like condo ownership and condo association to control it, yeah.
Or, or actually, literally, the building is on a fee simple lot, so they own the land underneath it, but they're on a common area.
That'd probably be helpful. I'm thinking about the individual wells, you know, for the units and, you know.
Ah, that's true.
If you had a fee simple lot that basically contained the three townhouses, you'd have one, you know, basically one group of ownership for the well.
Hmm.
And then, you know, agreements for each of the sub condominium lots.
So the well would be sort of on the common area, but each one would be owned fee simple?
Yeah.
Where do you envision that the well's going to, have you, I think, we'll have to do well testing, but where would you put a well?
He hasn't laid them out yet, but there's, we don't have to worry about, you know, separations with septic systems or anything like that.
Okay.
So they pretty much could go anywhere, as long as they meet the separations from the property lines and, you know, 10, 10 feet, 15 feet from the houses.
So each house would have its own well, and three families would share that one well?
That's ideally, yeah, what we would, that's what we'd be looking at.
I think it'd be useful to know from your client what they're looking for as far as, did they want yards around these, how much yard space? Because again, I think, you know, looking at this layout, if you follow more closely the O and R easement line, you might be able to put kind of more of them along the northern side and pull them a little off of where the, you know, again, the peak is that might be visible from other locations. And, but I think it depends also on, you know, what are they trying to achieve as far as also creating a community where they have some open space and, you know, where they have kids, where they're going to play, et cetera. So it'd be useful to go back to them. Has anything, getting, you know, away from this a little bit, has any additional analyses been done? Have you contacted DEC or contacted SHPO or, I know we talked preliminarily to John about those things, but I don't know if he's done any kind of background research getting into Seeker.
He didn't mention anything about that. I mean, obviously, I know he submitted a short EAF, you know, to try to start, you know, lead agency and start at least processing with the agencies that'd be involved.
Right.
He didn't mention anything to me about, you know, submitting to SHPO or DEC, anything along those lines.
So I don't know if it makes sense at this point to do lead agency intent, because I don't think we have a plan yet. I mean, we could still declare our intent, we just can't really circulate until we have something to circulate.
Figure out who else would be potentially involved.
Yeah, I could say, I need a list, yeah.
Yeah.
Just to comment on the, let's call it the more visible lots.
Mm-hmm.
Five, let's say 2, 3, 4, and 5 are the lots at the highest elevation.
Okay.
I mean, to the tune of, to the back of Lot 8 is 24 foot lower than the middle of the lot across the road.
Okay.
So I think that was the reasoning when there was the technical workshop, to try to put the larger buildings on that southerly side of the road, because...
They're lower down.
Down significantly lower. Maybe less visible, so.
What about Lot 6? Because it may be higher, you're right, and if the...
It's about 10 foot, 14 foot lower than the middle of 5.
Okay.
But again, it gets into the whole issue of grading, what they intend. What might be the grade now may not be the grade they want to build at.
Yeah.
So it goes back to Anthony's concern that you have a specific concern about a lot, and it's tough to envision it, because you don't know what the grading is. So maybe if they're going to be looking at some grading for the yield plan, maybe they could do some preliminary grading on this as well and show you what would be likely more visible than not.
Yeah. I would definitely, again, I think we're trying to achieve them not being visible, and you can definitely see the site from 208 as you're coming in. You can see the far end of it. So when you put a, you know, 30-foot-high building on it, you know, the question is, based on topo, you know, are you going to see anything? You know, I think the question is from 7 and 6. And then, again, if you're on the other side of, you know, I think we all have to take a look, drive around, maybe see, check out the site, see where it's visible from, but, you know, 3, 2, 1, I've been talking about pushing the homes back there, even though they're higher elevation, they're farther away from 208. So I don't know how high we're pushing them off the slope.
Would it make a difference to you if 6 was a single-family and 2 and 3 was the multifamily? I think my mic's got an issue.
Talk into it, James.
Is it?
Yeah, you have to talk into it.
Is it? All right, maybe.
Because you're turning your head.
It's a user error.
Yeah, your green light, you don't have a green light on yours.
I don't know what to say.
So that might be it. I mean, it may be amassing also that if in the end you need to stretch it that far, the cul-de-sac, having the smaller buildings, and I think that's what we have to figure out, what are the most visible locations on this site?
Right, I mean, one of the things I'll talk to John about, and, you know, I didn't do the layout, so I don't know exactly maybe what some of the things he was thinking when he laid this out, but, you know, maybe the three-family that we show on Lot 6, you know, you could swap that for the duplex on Lot 1, or you put a single on Lot 6 and you put the duplex maybe on Lot 2, and then the three-unit building goes on Lot 1, because that's long and narrow.
Right.
And if you were to reorient the building, not so that it's, you know, perpendicular to the road, but parallel to the contours of Lot 1, you know, having, taking this building here...
Right.
And putting it back here...
Right.
You know, with the parking lot and access drive coming down here, you know, you could kind of fit that in. Again, I'm not sure what other, what other things he might have been considering that I'm not aware of.
Right.
I'll mention that to him.
Okay. So I think we're still, again, we're still trying to confirm the yield, you know, 6, we're not talking about going from 16 to 10, we may be talking about going from 16 to maybe 15 or 14 at most, so we're close. And then I think now, as we, as this continues and evolves through the process, then we want to see the layout itself and, you know, maximize the locations of the buildings so that they're not as visible, and then what are meaningful areas of open space. And then, because it was clear-cut, there will be an expectation, and we've already expressed this to the applicant, that there'll be some replanting happening. Any other comments at this point? Nope, nope. So I think you will look into these items, and if you want to be on the next workshop agenda, the, what's our, when by date again?
April 25.
So if John wants to get on the agenda again, he can submit by that time.
That's for the May 9 meeting.
May 9 meeting?
Correct.
All right.
What would he, does he have to submit prior to the 25th, or does he just schedule that and then...
No, he has to submit something by the 25th. Cut-off is...
That's very nice.
I don't know yet.
I'll have John, Steve, give you the...
Yeah, I'll reach out to him.
And if he wants to submit some concepts, you know, again, acknowledging at this point that we don't have the yield, but if he wants to think about reorienting the layout a little bit, or giving us a couple of alternatives, you know, maybe he could submit that, if he wants to keep the process moving. And again, do you think we should do intensive lead at this point?
I don't know that we really have the list of all of the agencies yet, but...
Okay, let's hold off. So we're going to hold off on that action. All right?
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. And so then, our next item on the agenda is Karina Gomez.
Dave, my team.
Are you here also for Scunnamon?
Hi, yeah.
Okay. And Sherry, okay.
We didn't get to them until after noon, and then I realized that, well, that screws everything up, so next time I'm just going to put it by agencies. I have to come up with a way of how we want to do it.
Good evening.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hi, Dave.
Hey, Karina. Well, we're happy to be back here again before the Planning Board and the workshop, I believe, where we're at the final stage of this project. Since our last meeting, there were some housekeeping items that we took care of by email and regarding the applications, regarding signed portions of the applications, verification of voter registration, the plot plan that was on file with the building department. So those types of items, I believe, have all been addressed and clarified. In addition to that, we revised the layout to show the additional two parking spaces further away from Country Court, beyond the 50-foot setback requirement. And in so doing, we saved trees that were in the location of the previously proposed two parking space area. While moving this space further away from Country Court, it meant we had to, or it signified that we had to relocate the existing shed, which we did, to the east or to the west of the two parking spaces. I believe this is all comments, answers are many to comments that the Planning Board had at our last meeting. And I do not know of anything else that we need to do. I believe a draft resolution is prepared.
Yes. I believe the issues that we discussed at the last meeting have been resolved. The checklist items, the voter registration, and the parking were the issues that were outstanding, from my list, so the resolution is ready to go as far as I'm concerned.
And we did get a confirmation that the ZVA, they were flexible as far as where the parking lot spaces could go?
It was only recommendation to you.
Okay, did they send us something to that effect?
They certainly told me that on the phone, they didn't send anything that I saw, no.
They said that on the phone?
Their attorney did, yeah.
Okay, as long as we have some confirmation of it. In terms of this, so the shed was relocated, the driveway, did you say they are, they're not taking out trees, or they were able to fit it in?
No, we saved, in the original design, the shed, the two parking spaces were located further east, closer to Country Court.
Okay.
That would have required some trees being removed. That is no longer the case...
Okay.
Since the two parking space areas now move further west, or further away from Country Court, we can leave the trees as is.
So in fact, they're perhaps a little more shielded, since you have the trees in...
In fact, the two parking spaces are a lot shielded from Country Court.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question about that while you're on the subject? No, so to put, yeah, I agree that the parking space is going without moving any, removing any trees. But as memory serves, right beyond where that 20-foot mark was off of the existing driveway, behind the shed, there was a tree right behind there.
Will relocate the shed to leave the tree?
I mean, there were, I'm just asking, there were, I think there were a few trees in that area. Do you know that, do we need to remove trees, or was there a spot in there to fit the shed as well? That's the part I don't remember.
Yeah, our goal would be to save the trees, because there's the expense associated with it. Also, we'd rather not, it's expensive to remove trees. The location of the shed in relationship to the two parking space area can be shifted in that space.
To fit it into.
To keep the trees here.
And are we complete in terms of the septic system? And are we complete in terms of the septic system, and it can support five bedrooms?
Yes.
The only correction that needs to be made on the plans on the final one submitted, the state code doesn't use average time for septic design, it's the stabilized percolation rate. When you say average time, you use a number lower than the last run. So just fix that information so that it's correct. I'm sure that you looked at the last run and used that in your evaluation, just, you need to make sure that the referenced rate that's used for the evaluation is the stabilized rate.
Yeah, absolutely correct.
And one other issue, just for the final plan cleanup, could you move the approval box over to the right-hand fold with the project number so that when the plans are folded, you don't have to unfold them to see the approval box and the number?
Sure. And what, which, what project number are we using?
You are 0162-2018.
0162?
-2018.
Just put that number above the approval box and all the text you had for the approval box, delete. It's supposed to be an empty approval box so that the town stand can go in it.
Not a problem.
Minor issues, but just makes the final plan that much better.
Appreciate it.
So what is, oh, do the Planning Board members additional comments and questions?
One for Conservation Commission.
Yes.
On the subject, we somehow put into the verbiage where that we recommend that they pump that out at least once every five years. Keep a record of that, because otherwise you don't know, if they violate that and then sediment gets into the leaching area, system's doomed. So, and the only way we can verify that, we have to help, find those distribution boxes, uncover and put camera in, it's very costly, so, in the future, if you can document that every five years, it's preventive maintenance, it's well worth it.
Is it something we can add as a condition?
It's not a condition in your code, but...
Would that be...
I mean, if a system is functioning well, why amend it? I could see adding that note if the system is starting to fail, or there are complications associated with it, but...
You have no documentation, my problem is. You don't know, I have neighbors that I see a septic pump every six months, that's an indication that the system is not really working. I have other ones that I know, and the Conservation Commission, about 15 years ago, Cooperative Extension gave, I guess, a long seminar on ease of maintenance of septic leaching fields. One thing they stressed is in a normal-sized family of 4.5, you should have at least pumped once every five years, and you should keep documentation. Once you exceed it, you're on borrowed time.
It would certainly be a good idea for a local law if the town wanted to require that all septic systems in the town present documentation to clean out every five years, but to attach it to one application where there's no, you know, showing of need, if the applicant agrees to it, it's no problem, but I mean, it's, we've never done it to any other septic system in the town. Certainly fruitful legislation to require it. If the concerns that Wood has raised are there, then the town should be able to require it for everyone.
So, I guess I do have difficulty applying it to one, but I don't disagree that it's a great idea. So, I think the other thing we can do is just perhaps as a policy, maybe we'll ask the town board, you know, their thoughts. If they don't adopt the local law, maybe going forward, we make it a policy statement that, you know, as a condition, we'll expect regular septic system maintenance. I just hate to hit the applicant now because it's something new.
I understand it. My problem is that when we have engineers testifying that the septic is working, they don't really know that.
Yeah.
Unless they do some exploration.
Right. Okay.
But if you have that documentation, you know, you can reasonably be assured that the system will last almost indefinitely.
Okay.
And I don't think there's any 50% expansion area allowed here either, so if they run into problems, there are problems.
Yeah, I don't know if they have 50%, or if they showed 50% on any plans that they submitted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ward. Do you know if there was on the original, was, did it show 50% expansion area? Because I don't know how old the system is.
Yes, it does.
It does show?
If you look at the plot plan prepared by Langton Tully, that we submitted along with the other documents, my version's a little small, I can't... My eyesight's good for a short period of time, but there, I believe it shows an expansion area towards the west of the septic field.
Okay. Yep.
The ad area you have to maintain that, you know, another thing is on leaching areas, I see mistake all the time, people put a lot of trees, shouldn't be any trees in it.
Yeah.
We're not proposing any trees. Gary, I can assure you that.
Thank you.
Is the Planning Board any more comments or questions on this? Are we ready for the resolution? Yep, okay. Do we have the negative declaration built into this, or did we say this was exempt?
I believe it's built in on page... Page 2, or it's a type 2 action, I'm sorry.
The last version I have, I don't think anybody has it in their packet, so I have something that was redlined from March 19th, was that updated?
I now have a clean copy, maybe I didn't send it, but I accepted all the redlining.
Okay, so I think we're going to have to just read through it since I don't, I don't think we have it.
Yeah, I know they don't.
Anyway, it's a type 2 action, it's under 4,000 square feet.
Okay.
In terms of the conditions, I'll start on page 4, since I have a clean copy, I can tell you what they've changed to. The first is to sign off on Mark, and in particular, he's going to want to make sure that the, what was mentioned before, the septic notes on the, or the PRC notes have been corrected. Condition number two, I think is the same, it requires owner occupancy at all times. Three, and these are just provisions taken right from the special permit, code provisions, no exterior changes may be made at all. Four, the owner must maintain the accessory apartment in conformance with the requirements of the code. We will mention the zoning board decision in condition, what is now five, they may have changed on your copy. The owner affidavit shall be signed by all property owners, I think that was taken care of, right?
Yes, I don't know whether you will have it, but I do have...
Yeah, I saw the email, yeah, so that goes away. Then the standard last condition, that nothing else may be built on site not shown on the approved plans.
With that, then, I will make a motion, what we'll do is we'll circulate the, the clean copy to everybody, just as a final look, since you don't have it in front of you, so it's subject to your final review. But with that, I will ask for a motion, if someone would make a motion to approve the accessory apartment.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the accessory apartment for Karina Gomez.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Could you roll call?
Yes. Anthony Vaccaro?
Aye.
Bonnie Franzen?
Aye.
Jim McKnight?
Aye.
Jeff Manson?
Aye.
Jason Sorinski?
Aye.
Approved. Subject 2, we'll look at the final verbiage, and then we'll file it.
How many copies of the final plan would you like signed to?
We usually have to bring the, well, this is in the subdivision, so...
But how much do you, how many do you need?
Subdivision, I need 12 because I have to send them to everybody and their brother. But here, Mark needs one after the building department needs one, I need one in the file, Town Clerk does. I would say 6.
Sure.
But I'll confirm the number and get back to you tomorrow?
Yes, absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
All right.
Oh, 262, Scunnamunk subdivision. Yes, they...
I don't know, it's starting, actually, they're going to shut down.
Probably gets, gets it screened out.
All right.
We hadn't seen 262 for a while. So with this subdivision, I believe we have already determined the yield, so now we're looking at the cluster layout. Is that correct? I believe that's where we are.
That's my understanding, yeah. John had said that the board previously approved the conventional layout for 11 lots.
Yeah, November 13th.
Thank you. All right. I'm just waiting for Noreen to return.
I'm sorry.
And now Jason has left us. So why don't you give us an overview, where are we?
Okay, sure. So as we just discussed, the board had previously granted the acceptance of the conventional layout for this project, which was for 11 lots. This is actually the property that is to the east of the DG Realty application that we just spoke about a few minutes ago. So even though they have the 11 lots, as the conventional yield, the owner is looking to only build six lots. So it has been some time since this is back before the board, so it might actually be new to some of the board members. But, so we have a layout which we provided, which has a kind of a loop road at the end, and six lots on that, and John had submitted a, you know, plan set, and with that, he had he made some revisions, I think, that addressed some of Mark's prior comments, provided a road profile, some preliminary drainage layout. I know he's, John's still got some work to do on the drainage, showing inverts, rim elevations, and that sort of thing. He showed the, he now has easements over some offsite properties to run the sewer. Basically, the, due to the elevations, the sewer main was going to be very difficult to run, excuse me, without getting, it was going to be difficult to run due to the elevation, so he was able to get some offsite easement so that he could run the sewer line in an area that's, where the grade makes it much, much, much easier to accomplish. So that's part of the plan set that you have. And the open space has been identified, and basically, the open space that's shown on the plan is owned by Lot 1 only, so the area in the middle, which is a green space in the center of the road, is part of Lot 1, so, and that's part of the open space. I think John had told me that, I think, some of the area on here that was open space, I think he, it's designated as it, but he did not have it highlighted as such. So you might see, for instance, it might not be clear on the other sheets which part of the area is open space, because it was supposed to be hatched, and I think that was something that didn't get done. Basically, it would be the back portion of Lot 1, and then all of the center area there. With the next submission, we'll be, sorry, clarifying that.
Was the proposed bioretention stormwater facility always in the middle of the lot, of the open space?
Yeah.
Yep, okay. What, is that, is that just a kind of a depressional area, or is this going to be a full-blown stormwater basin?
You could say, I think it was a bio, yeah, it's a bioretention area, so it's not a deep pond, but normally those would only be...
Kind of like a grass?
Two feet deep.
Okay.
Two feet deep, something like that, two or three feet deep, with planting soil, you know, landscaping, and that sort of thing. Sort of a glorified rain garden.
Okay.
If you're familiar with the rain garden.
Yeah.
So that'll basically just collect the water, treat it, and then slowly discharge it off the site.
The six-bedroom dwellings that are being shown, well, what are the sizes of those dwellings, and are they pretty representative of what would be constructed? Generally?
Good question. I can measure it, I think I looked at it. I remember measuring, I just can't remember the numbers. It's about 70 by 40.
Okay. So 5,600, that would be plenty for six bedrooms. Are they proposing garage, or what's, what are their thoughts, are they going to have parking pads?
I'll have to check with John, I don't know that. I know they show the garage, the driveway going up to the building.
Okay.
I don't know if that's intended to be a garage underneath, or not.
Mark, has anyone reviewed the application?
Yes, we have some initial quick notes. Dave can maybe have John do some of the verifications. We do need to verify the zoning setbacks for Lot 1, just as far as what's, what are the yards, I'll put it that way. So we need to double-check that, I'll cover that with John. On the bulk table, it looks as if you had the building height symbols backwards, you're, instead of saying equal to or less than the maximum, you're saying greater than. So that might be a nice thing to fix. Just double-check, as I said, the bulk table. Reminder to the board, this is a proposed road, it has to be a town road based on the configuration proposed. The usual comment about getting early on so we can lock in the real estate on the plans for the approval boxes, because they're all missing. It does have to go to County DPW for the sewer, so we need to hear about that. As well, the Realty, there's a Realty subdivision involved here, I believe, so we'll have to go to the county for that. We don't have the script yet, so we don't know the final proposed design for the stormwater, but we'll have an expectation we'll get that. I don't know if the 239 referrals have been made yet.
I know we did.
I don't know that we've even done seeker.
Yeah, we did a lead agency notice.
We did it, okay.
Back in July. So we should check on that. As crazy as it may seem, there are some existing structures on the site, but as was pointed out earlier on another application, it'd be good to have it verified that the existing residences will be demolished, but also when, so that we don't have an attempt to have somebody occupy something while the bulldozers are running around them. The surveyor should add, to make these preliminary plans when you're submitting in that manner, all the meets and bounds for both the roads and the division lines for the lots. When you do fix the bulk table, so we don't have to check it in more than one location, just have it on Sheet 3, but you don't need to have another bulk table that duplicates it on Sheet 1, one bulk.
Only one bulk table, and put it on Sheet 3?
Yeah.
Okay.
On the proposed sheet, I think one bulk table in every application is more than adequate. The O and R easement that runs through the property, there are some encroachments that we'll just have to deal with as far as getting the necessary approvals. The stormwater basin, I don't know how they're going to react to the stormwater basin within the O and R easement, that we'll have to see.
Yeah, I think we need to send it to O and R.
Yeah.
Yeah. And let's do that sooner or later.
If it does impede them from getting equipment through, they may have a comment. There's some grading that may be occurring off property, showing grading right to the property lines, so it's, hopefully, will be limited to just that. And then we've got, of course, the road, which I suspect they won't have an objection to, but it does need to go to O and R. Of course, we do have the sewer going off property, so we need to verify that that is all in an approval form, which I'm sure they would not obtain County DPW approval unless there's a place for the collection system on this lot somewhere for it to go. We haven't looked at the detail sheets yet, we're going to do that once we move forward from the front sheet, as it may be.
It did go to the county, and the county reported it out as local.
So, 239 was local.
Mark, is there someone in your office that can check the wetlands, or any wetlands? You don't have anyone? There were two locations where there was a question, if there might be some wetlands, when we had done a field visit, and that included, let me see.
Something down near Lot 5, that lower area?
One was over by Lot 6, as you're coming... One was over by Lot 6, as you're coming in to the property, kind of at the corner where Schaefer is. It was, I believe, that was an area that might have been wet. And then the back of, I want to say it was like 4, near Ridgeway. Actually, if you look at the existing conditions map, so see how it's flattened in here, right in here? Like to see if there's anything there. And do a determination right in here, I believe was the area. Do you recall that, Ward? About where?
I believe you're correct with your designation. Last fall, we walked that, that was, Paul Neal and I said those look like potential indication of vegetation of a wetland species.
So that's one. The other is that, again, this was a property where it appears there might have been some -- there was some clearing done in advance.
As we -- when we looked at the stumps, they were cut more recently than what we were led to believe because their deterioration had not set in. You know, those oaks, those were mostly red oaks.
Okay.
Large, large red oaks.
Right.
And they were still pretty good shape, which means they weren't cut too long ago.
Right.
Not, we were told, one of the superstorms took them out and
Right.
Didn't timeframe, didn't end up.
I recall that. So I think we're going to want to see some kind of planting plan also here where in the open space and places, some kind of landscaping plan.
Right. Then you had, I think you had one white oak, which was tagged to be saved, but it looks like they had already backfilled around it and looked like it was already on the way out.
It's on the way out.
As you first come in, it fell off of a scunny monk.
So trees that were replanted that are dying or dead?
No, no. This was the original tree. It looked like it was tagged to be saved.
Oh, I see.
And they were doing some grading, I guess.
Yeah.
Because there was a lot of, if I recall, there was mulch put down.
Wood chips everywhere.
Wood chips, yeah.
With a lot of fill. The remains of a lot of the trees were there.
Yeah. It probably would be worthwhile to put whatever's being demolished, removed somewhere on one of the sheets, as Mark pointed out.
Probably the existing conditions plan, just acknowledge and indicate when.
Be with a note.
Last note I had relative to, similar to a previous discussion, we've got some stormwater facilities that are treating stormwater from town roads. When it's expected, they're going to go to a town stormwater district. We need to find out from the town if they want a dedication or an easement because that has to be properly shown on the plan. So that's a, can be an open issue until we get some direction.
This is also related to the DG Realty. So with the stormwater for either of these properties, are they going directly into the village properties or village roads? Is there a coordination that's required?
Don't have the SWIP yet.
Yeah.
So we'll see the direction. I suspect this one is staying within the subdivision and discharging to the southeast, but I would suspect that the DG is going toward the village.
Yeah, that one.
So there's going to have to be some coordination between the village relative to the infrastructure and that proposed road as a possibly receiving conduit for what's being discharged from the stormwater of the town subdivision.
Any other questions from the board members at this point?
Has this road radius been reviewed? It seems tight.
Yeah, I don't know that.
Is this going to be a public road?
It's got to be a town road.
Okay.
So I have not sat down with the highway superintendent and had this reviewed.
Could a car get around that tight curve there? And what if somebody parks on the corner there?
More than a car I would like. Once the board is locked in on the lot count and layout, they probably need to get an overlay for emergency vehicles and delivery trucks. It may be such that when you do that overlay, there may be a restriction on parking.
Yeah.
So we'll have to cross that road or that bridge when we get to it.
I think we, Mike had said, we did already deem, we said this, the yield was 12, I believe, and
I thought it was 11, and they're proposing six.
And you're proposing six. So as far as the six homes, you know, because it's less than what the yield could arrive at, I think we're okay with that. Now we've got to focus on the actual layout.
Exactly. Like, once the layout, the board has come to a layout, we're going to have to drill down on the roads, highway superintendent, turning radii.
Yeah. In general, I mean, I think this is a layout that's been progressing, and I don't have any issue with having this sent to the highway superintendent and other involved officials to get their input as well. Does that seem reasonable?
Would making the road a one-way road past the entrance or would making like the actual circle part one-way?
Could you do that?
Would that be a solution to this?
For a town road?
Ultimately, it's the town board's decision.
The town board would have to do that.
But certainly, if, from a planning standpoint, it certainly creates a good rotation of movement and makes the road functionally wider, I'll put it that way, that might be an alternative.
Well, when you consider road width for emergency vehicles, I mean, you don't, they have both lanes to use?
Yeah, but if you're looking at whether or not you make it one-way, maybe then you can have on-street parking, whereas, again, until we get the overlays, we won't know.
Sure.
But two-way plus parking may not work at all, whereas one-way plus maybe one-side parking may work. We're not there yet.
Well, that's, and the other thing is, does the vertical curve match what the horizontal radius is? I mean, you may have to adjust those locations.
Yeah, we're not at that point yet, but the vertical, horizontal, all the curves have to be looked at. Turning movements have to be looked at. But the one-way alternative is one that I wouldn't take off the table. It's worth thinking about.
But neither the planning board nor the highway superintendent can fix that, only the town board, but certainly they look to your recommendation.
Any other comments, questions?
A couple things. When I was looking through this previously, so I noticed designs for curbs on the road and that kind of thing. I thought, I thought it was this project early on, we had talked about, we had a little debate about curbs on the roads, no curbs, preserving some more of that rural type thing.
Rural character.
Rural character. I don't know if that's still an open question on this. You mentioned that the, well, Lot 1, where it runs along the easement, borders the DG Realty property, but it's labeled on the map, Dama Weskey. I know on Sheet 3, on Sheet 1, in previous plans we've been given. And so I noted that, I'd taken a look on the GIS system that Orange County has, and I didn't find a Dama Weskey as a, like even a previous owner, I thought perhaps before DG Realty acquired the property. So I'm just not sure what that's referencing to. So that might need to be updated, just again, because it makes it significant now that we're dealing with two projects that are butting up against each other. That's really it for me.
One other thing, pulling out on Scunny Monk Road was hard.
Talk into the mic, please.
Pulling out on Scunny Monk Road was difficult, wasn't it? Or is this a different road now, now that it's a proposed road? It's different than what we pulled out on?
I don't know. I think there, well, there was an issue because at one point
They were side-by-side versus shared access.
Right. DG Realty and Scunny Monk wanted to be right next to each other. But Scunny Monk's now coming, oh, sorry, DG Realty is now coming off of a private, no, or a village road. So I don't know that it's an issue. I don't know if, but I don't know if site distance, we should probably see site distance on the plan if it's not there.
Especially if Scunny Monk, that road's already extremely heavily traveled. Probably more than the development should remain. Just waiting at that light there, it's obnoxious. Along with a few other choice words, but that's for the State Department of Transportation.
Yeah, there's a planting schedule, but I'm not sure if the plants are actually shown on one of the sheets.
Typical engineer.
Shoot the messenger, please.
I didn't mean you, I meant Quinn.
So I think we'll start going over this in detail now.
Relative to the, whether or not the road, if it has curbs or not, there's an alternate minor street detail, which allows for swales, but no curbs. That has to be approved by the town board.
Okay.
As per the town.
So do we get, we don't get to select the type of road? It's the town board that selects?
Classification is made, but as far as whether or not it's going to have, the town code says that all roads, unless otherwise approved by the town board, must have concrete curbs both sides.
Okay. Unless approved by the town board. So if we wanted to go with a more rural landscape, we'd have to get a waiver from the town board?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody, what are their thoughts? I think this is the subdivision we talked about, and in general, trying to keep rural character. Anybody have strong feelings about curbs versus no curbs? And this is serving six residences. I would only add that I don't know if curbs are necessary for the stormwater aspect of the project or not, but you're saying swales could address the stormwater?
John, what's the maximum slope through the whole, or Dave, what's the maximum slope that John shows?
Is it flexibility on the curb type?
10% is the maximum road rate.
I, I get nervous with 10% slopes with swales. It's more difficult to contain the stormwater. If you have curbs, you can put inlets within the curved area. It's just easier to maintain control over the stormwater on steep slopes.
Do we do concrete curbs or?
It's concrete curbs.
No granite?
You can
Or cobblestone?
I think the Belgian block curbs are an alternative. I'll have to look in the spec.
Belgian block, right. Okay.
They look a lot nicer.
Yeah.
I've been told you can actually get, sometimes get it done cheaper with Belgian block than concrete.
Really?
And easier to repair.
Easier to repair, easier to change with the driveway location is.
Hmm. So that might be one consideration. It'll be a lot more attractive.
Okay. I know, John, on the grading plan, he had his, you know, accounted for curbing on the grading plan, so.
Right.
So it sounds like you prefer Belgian block.
I think that'd be great, personally. That's me.
I agree.
I think it just looks more attractive.
Okay. And that, you think that's an acceptable alternative in the town code?
Trying to check right now.
Unless they want to go up to granite.
Absolutely. Belgian block is, that was included as a typical detail with the approval of the planning board and highway superintendent.
All right.
Highway superintendent may comment on it because plows do a number on those curbs. And it doesn't number on the plows if it's concrete.
It all depends if they put the proper batter on the Belgian blocks, which the code does require. If you build them vertical, it's a nightmare.
Do we allow mountable? Because I've seen some places where they do the Belgian block, but they're at that angle so that they're mountable. And I don't know how, if that's good, bad.
It defeats some of the purpose of containing the stormwater.
Okay.
But I've seen it done where it's a reverse lane, set of the stone for driveways.
And/or mountable for concrete curbs sometimes is better.
So the answer on the Belgian block is yes. It's in the road spec, and there's a detail provided in the road spec.
Okay. Great. So I think we're just going to start getting into our detailed review. We'll get this off to the highway superintendent. Is the SWIP prepared yet? Do we have a SWIP?
No, he said he had more work to do on the drainage.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So he's still working on it.
All right. So I think we're just going to continue this and move it along.
Okay.
Mark, any other comments or no?
No, not at this point.
And Mike, you're good?
Yep.
All right. And now we have Sherri Tor trailer.
You've got to bring different jackets when you have to sit for so many projects.
My daughter was in the mock trial competition in high school. It was a four-hour ordeal the other day. I could sit for many.
But at least it was interesting.
It was, actually, yeah. It was good. Although it was the second time we've been sitting skates.
Was the decision different on the second?
Well, they won the first one, they lost the last one, but it was the same in favor of the state.
So the reason you're on the agenda, or this application is on the agenda, we received a request from John, I believe, for an extension, I believe of two months perhaps. And the planning board can grant an extension, but you have to provide, you know, it's for good reason. So we needed to get a sense of where are we in the process? Why do they need the extension of the approval?
Well, basically, John told me that he was thinking that he was going to be at the meeting on Tuesday. Because he said it had something to do with the trailers and architectural considerations of the trailers and the connections, and it took the architect some time to figure that out. So I guess he was going to, he planned on explaining that to you at the meeting on Tuesday.
Do you want to move to Tuesday? He's not on the agenda for Tuesday?
I'm just wondering why he's expecting to tell us on Tuesday if we weren't.
Well, because I knew he couldn't be here tonight.
Okay.
I don't remember him asking me to put Sherri Tor on Tuesday.
Maybe it's the next formal meeting, but when I asked him with the, about the project, he just said he didn't really want to get into the whole thing with the trailers with me beyond what I just told you.
Okay.
So I don't know what more there is to that, if anything, but he said he would explain to you when he was back before the board with the formal meeting.
Eagle.
I assume it was next week.
Maybe he's on for a different item? So here's the agenda for the 16th.
Okay, good, because I can't remember right now.
So we have
John might also have been thinking that DG Realty was going to be on the meeting next week.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, if he just thought he was going to be there.
Potentially, yeah.
Eagle Valley, oh, sorry, Eagle Valley. Eagleview. I used to live in Eagle Valley. Kingsville and Hillside and Scott.
He's not in any of those, but
I guess we could put him on. I mean, does anybody feel, if he's not here and he's best able to explain it, might as well have him on.
Makes more sense.
Yeah. So if he can be here.
Or if you want, I mean, I'm just going to throw this out there, if you want to grant a one-month extension, I'm assuming he's going to be here for the meeting next month. This way, I'm just thinking of him. He's going to come here and just give you an explanation.
Right.
I mean, a one-month extension.
Can we make it
Whatever you're comfortable with.
Before public hearings?
Mike, at what point, you know, because I think they're already past the expiration timeframe.
As long as they ask for it before it expired, you can grant it later. But if you keep putting it off, they will have gotten it by default because you didn't
take action.
So I would recommend you keep it on for next Tuesday.
Yeah, we'd like to see him Tuesday.
Okay, I'll let him know.
Can I put it before the public hearings or does it have to wait till all three public hearings?
I think you can change the agenda any way you want.
Let's put it before the public hearing. Okay.
Board members, do you have any questions while, that can be sent back to John? Because it sounds like you don't have enough history to be able to really
No, I mean, I did ask him.
Okay.
And he just kind of said, wow, you know, the architect and the footprint and the buildings fit together and yada, yada, yada. But he said he would go through that with you at the meeting, so.
Okay.
I don't have the information.
All right. Any comments? No? All right. So we will see John on Tuesday.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Great. It was a pleasure.
Thank you.
Good night, Dave.
Thanks, guys.
Good night.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
So just a quick update, the board is aware that Mike is retiring. That's going to be happening in May, I believe.
End of May.
End of May.
Congratulations.
And the town board is, we've been working on an RFP for a planning board attorney, so that's probably going to be posted within the next few days. And we'll take a look at those and then make recommendations to the town board and ultimately come up with a decision of, you know, who will fill in now and be the planning board attorney. So that's in the process. I think that's really all the news I have. I will tell you that I have been getting quite a number of emails that are, they seem to be form emails. to be form emails, they have kind of the same content, but it's regarding the Kingsville synagogue, and concern that there are a lot of residents, I guess the school districts may be on spring break, and people wouldn't be able to attend the hearing, so, you know, I don't know what the attendance is going to be like next Tuesday, we may have a turnout for Kingsville, and we also received, as you saw the comments, from South Blooming Grove. So, just want to let you know that there's definitely interest from the local neighbors as to what's going on and traffic, and we'll be listening to them at our public hearing on Tuesday.
You can probably accommodate both the Publix requests and the Village of South Blooming Grove requests by continuing the hearing until another date.
I think that was, that's definitely our intent.
Should the rapid open?
Yeah, we'll leave the, we'll leave the hearing open, because I think we want to hear back from South Blooming Grove. We did talk about, I think one of the comments was being an involved agency, and I think you confirmed, Mike, that, in fact, we did send it to them.
Yes.
So, we'll let them know that, but we're going to coordinate with them. I think the primary issue is that there are improvements within their right-of-way, and we're also looking just to get some history on the subdivision in Monroe, just to make sure whatever conditions had been applied originally to that lot, you know, are they still applicable today? I don't, I don't know the answer. So, I just want to update you on that. Anybody have anything to share?
Can we back up one minute?
Yep.
Congratulations, Mike. Are you going to be, you'll be at the next meeting, but not in May?
No, I'll be here in May.
So, your next meeting is next May?
I'll be here through the end of May.
Up through the end.
But not in June. I'll certainly be available by phone or email to help with the transition, but I won't be at the meetings after that.
Okay.
I don't live here anymore.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mark, do you have anything?
Nope.
You're good? All right, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.